Please start with the roll call.
Council President Albertson, here. Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Perez. She's here. There you are. Thank you. Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
And Councilmember Rivera. Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
Move to excuse the absent council member.
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Albertson, second by Councilmember O'Halloran and Councilmember Perez, that the absent council member be excused. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. All right, first up today, we have a special presentation, Government Finance Officers Association Recognition for Outstanding Public Service Award. And to present is Carrie Rohler.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Pavoni, council members. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to recognize some of our staff members here this evening. First, I'd like to ask Kristin Travellis to come forward. Kristin is the recipient of the Government Finance Officers Association Award for Outstanding Public Service. This national award recognizes individuals and their dedication to the finance profession and the community they serve. The work of a finance professional is critical and to government's ability to serve. And most of what we do is often behind the scenes. This award is given to those supporting others, leading organizations, and making a positive impact in those they serve. Kristin is an excellent ambassador for the city's mission and vision and seeks out opportunities and methodologies to achieve the city's goals. Her dedication to transparency and keeping the community informed is visible in her work this past year with the budget season, where she implemented change in how we gather community input, along with creating a budget video, which went through some basic terminology and visuals to better explain our budget process. Her ability to take complex financial information and translate it into a readable, consumable format for all to understand has been a wonderful addition to our team and just makes our team so much better. Congratulations, Kristin, and thank you for the service that you do to our community. Two other awards I'd like to be able to present this evening. If I could have the rest of our finance team up, I have Ariel Yorich, Sean Hollingsworth, Duncan McKelvey, please come up and join me up here. Sean Yi, Travis Case, Tuan Nguyen, and Taylor Bracken. Our city was received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, which included a special recognition for our presentation for our capital investments program. This award represents a significant achievement and reflects the commitment to meeting the highest principles of government budgeting. In order to receive this award, this team had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation in four categories. Categories of communication, to develop a financial plan, an operations guide, and a budget policy. Along with those four categories, they were also required to meet 14 mandatory criteria. Further, we received a special recognition around our budget and capital investments, investment program, of which this year we implemented a change where we added additional information around the priorities decision matrix, highlighting priority projects and how they relate back to our business plan. Also, as a special note, I just wanted to mention that we received the highest marks possible from all three reviewers for this budget document, which is really especially exciting. This document takes the entire department, and so I wanted to thank you all for your hard work. And I'm going to ask Sean, would you hold this for us? So that's one of the awards. So thank you, budget team. The other award for this excellent group is we also received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for our annual financial statement for 2023. This award recognizes the city's highest standard for demonstrating constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story and to motivate people to be able to read our financial statements. A huge document, and we try to make sure it's put into consumable pieces. Our city prepares an enhanced financial statement, which goes beyond the generally accepted accounting principles that are required of us in order to be considered for this award. Their certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of government accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment and demonstrates the commitment of the finance department to meeting these highest principles of government accounting. And so I also want to specifically thank Ariel Yorich. She is the leader of this document, and through her leadership, we received this special award. Yeah, so I just wanted to thank you for allowing us to be able to present this this evening. This finance department works really hard, and like I mentioned, there's a lot of behind the scenes that we do to help and support the city and being able to recognize this team. This is just a few of us here this evening, but being able to recognize them with your permission, I'm just really grateful for that. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for showing. Yeah, we're going to get some pictures. I will say, you know, our finance department maybe is not the most public facing, but the work you guys do is extremely important, and we appreciate it, especially at the high level that you achieve. So thank you much. Thank you very much for all your hard work. So let's take some pictures up front here and have the council join us.
I was like, visitation back there.
All right, next up is the administrative report.
All right, good evening, everyone. Congratulations, Team Finance. Get ready to line the streets of downtown Renton for the annual River Days Parade, Saturday, July 26 at 10:00 a.m. The event will travel east down South Third Street from Shattuck Avenue South to Liberty Park. Don't miss this beloved tradition and kickoff to a weekend filled with festivities, arts and crafts, and entertainment galore. For information about this and other River Days weekend events, please visit rentonlaw.gov/Riverdays. Renton Police Department is excited to kick off its four-day youth academy. Thirty-six middle school students will experience a unique, hands-on introduction to careers in law enforcement, firefighting, and emergency medical services through interactive activities and real-world simulations. This collaborative program is made possible through the partnership of the Renton Police Department, King County Sheriff's Office, Newcastle Police Department, Washington State Patrol, and the DEA. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, road closures happening this week can be found at rentonlaw.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting. Unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
All right, thank you. Next up is audience comment. We do have a couple people signed up. I want to remind everybody that all remarks must be addressed to the council as a whole. When I call your name, please step up to the podium. You'll be allowed three minutes. Please give your name and city address for the record. And the first person is Alice Lockridge.
Yes, I'm Alice Lockridge. I live in Renton. I'm here today to speak on historical and current discrimination by the city council in written and spoken words, as well as their actions. Today happens to be the 102nd anniversary of Renton's historically huge Outdoor Ku Klux Klan rally on July 14, 1923. This Second Klan core belief was still white supremacy over African-Americans and all non-white immigrants and native people, but they were also against unions, leftists, and the unemployed. They preached conservative family values and embraced only fundamentalist strain of the Protestant Christianity. They passed state initiatives to outlaw church schools that were run by Jews or Catholics. I have with me a historic photo that shows the Klan members in full-length robes, pointed hats, and face masks that even included a costume for their horse. The emperor, William Simmons, spoke to the Members Only Group at People's Park here in Renton that was held before the public event. In 1923, the Renton population was 3,000. Wilson Station, the initiation held there, swore in and took dues from 1,500 locals. There were 3,000 cars parked in the field, and the total attendance was 50,000. This much advertised event was on city property. The same year, the city's newest high school was named after Henry Ford, a famous racist and anti-Semitic and the Nazi Party award recipient. In 1923, the city also built a new city hall, and the mayor was Thomas Rann. History doesn't forget what you do while you're in office. But let's move forward to a newer law in Washington State filed July 12, 1999. It is the Washington Administrative Code 16216260. This law states that it is discriminatory to gender a job title with nouns or suffixes in official government language, documents, job advertisements, or verbalizations. Gender-neutral job titles are the ones that don't specify or imply gender, such as firefighter or lawyer. Last week, at this council's meeting, when members were asked if their committees had any unfinished business to report, they each responded with a gendered job title, a smile in the words, "No unfinished business to report, Mr. Mayor." This has probably been repeated hundreds of times, but last week it was flagrant because seven of them did it in a row. With this reminder or lesson about this 25-year-old Washington law, I expect that our members will respond in the future with no mention of the gender of the person in the job title, "Mayor," for our city.
All right, so next up is, we have somebody signed up virtually. Yes.
We have Carter Farmer has signed up to speak virtually, but I don't see Carter sign up.
Hey, is Carter here with us today? I don't think so. Okay. All right. Oh, yeah, we do have one more person signed up. Oh, I missed that one. We do have one more person signed up. Sharon Bolstad.
Hello, everyone. I'm Sharon. I live in Renton. Nice job, finance. Let's talk about perception. The use of hearing and sight to become aware when forming an opinion. An example would be me wearing my For a Better Renton t-shirt, trying to look you in the eye while checking my notes as I'm speaking, and overall, my comments. These will all impact your opinion. But let's start with acknowledging. Let's acknowledge the receptionist downstairs, who last week was more concerned about how everybody else in the building was making out with no air conditioning than she was. Or the utility clerk that managed to help three customers at the same time while remaining calm, respectful, and smiling. Or Mark from Housing, the housing repair, who stopped on his way out the door, and he was going on vacation, but he stopped to answer questions without running and rushing to get away. And then the animal control officer Wilkinson, who responded to a dog bite report by explaining how he would try to find the dog and the owner in an effort to keep everyone safe. He also followed up twice. Using these examples gives the perception of a well-run city. Now, keeping perception in mind, I suggest, before, during, and after public comments, even though the Zoom and YouTube audience can't see you, please don't cross your arms and smirk. Don't whisper to your neighbor. Don't roll your eyes. And in the unlikely event that you respond to comments or questions, be respectful. Don't make excuses or play the victim. Own it, apologize, and move on. If you use email, remember, they're all public record. All of these send a message altering perception. I would like to, in order to have transparency for this entire group, I would like to recommend that the Zoom and YouTube audience be able to see you all during these meetings. It could be added right here, right in this space by my head. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. So back to virtual is Carter Farmer. Still not here?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, well, I want to thank everybody for signing up. We appreciate the comments when individuals come and take their time to speak to the council. So thank you very much. Next up is Consent Agenda. There are three items for council consideration. Would you like any pulled for separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Albertson.
Hearing none, I move that we, I move the council approve the consent agenda as published.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Albertson, second by Councilmember Perez, that the consent agenda be approved as published. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. We're on to unfinished business. Council President Albertson.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember O'Halloran will be presenting the financial.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee has eight reports.
All right, the first report is approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Council payable total payment is $6,975,242.16 for a number of vouchers, including one wire transfer and payroll total payment at $2,352,529.80 for payroll vouchers that include 752 direct deposits and 19 checks. This is the June 1 through June 15 pay period. This was signed by the committee chair, vice chair, and approved virtually by the chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Right, next report is regarding a bid award for the airport. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to award the contract to Perimeter Security Group LLC for the gate and perimeter security upgrades project and authorize a mayor and city clerk to execute this contract in the amount of The committee further recommends authorization of a transfer in the amount of $1,067,570.66 from the 2025 airport operating and fund balance to the airport security and fence upgrade account as part of the third-quarter budget amendment adjustment. This is also approved virtually by the chair and signed by the vice chair member.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee report.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Right, the next report is regarding the acquisition of King County parcel 1723059026. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of King County parcel 1723059026 through the city's powers of eminent domain and to hold a public hearing to consider this issue on July 21, 2025. This, too, is approved by the chair and signed by the vice chair member.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee report.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
The use of eminent domain in this particular circumstance was at the request of the seller of the property because it affords them some tax advantages. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding a grant from the Port of Seattle. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the administration to accept the 2025-2026 Port of Seattle Economic Development Partnership Program Award of $120,000 with a city match of $60,000. Additionally, the committee recommends authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign both grant agreements. This is signed by the committee vice chair member and approved virtually by the chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee report.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
The next report is regarding an amendment to our contract with Granicus for additional website development. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the execution of Amendment Number One to Contract 25046 with Granicus in the amount of $101,847.87 for additional website development modules and licensing. This, too, approved virtually by the chair and signed by the vice chair member.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding a lease agreement with Canon Solutions America for print and mailroom copy printing equipment. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the lease agreement with Canon Solutions America in the amount of $185,604.93 for new print and mailroom copy printing equipment. This, too, approved virtually by the chair and signed by the vice chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee report.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is an agreement with Tyler Technologies for our enterprise resource planning implementation. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the agreement with Tyler Technologies in the initial amount of $1,954,874 for the implementation of a new enterprise resource planning system. This, too, is approved virtually by the chair and signed by the vice chair member.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee report.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the final report from the Finance Committee is regarding the second-quarter budget amendment ordinance. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt the ordinance amending the 2025-2026 biennial budget through a budget amendment to incorporate items as detailed on this attached summary in the ordinance. The ordinance that was submitted to council last week has been amended to reflect a change in the request to prove an additional full-time equivalent employee, or position. The position title of data report writer has been corrected to Client Technology Services Specialist III. This was approved virtually by the chair and signed by the vice chair members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee report.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. All right, thank you for your assistance, Councilmember O'Halloran. Councilmember Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we're going to move on to legislation. We have two ordinances for first reading.
All right, the first ordinance is regarding the second-quarter budget amendment. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the, amending the City of Renton fiscal years 2025-2026 biennial budget as adopted by ordinance number 6147 and last amended by ordinance number 6158 by increasing the budgeted revenues and expenditures by $6,404,355 and $22,215,881, respectively, eliminating Fund 505, amending the salary table, and adding new approved full-time positions, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries.
All right, the final ordinance is also for first reading is regarding the acquisition of a King County property through the use of eminent domain. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, providing for the acquisition of real property located in Renton, Washington, tax parcel number 1723059026, including through the exercise of eminent domain for public purposes, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, we are on to new business. Council President Albertson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, July 21, 2025, the committee of the whole meeting will be canceled or is canceled for that week. And then at 7 o'clock, the council meeting will occur here in council chambers and via video conference. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Van.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Utilities Committee has a meeting on July 21, 2025, Monday, 4:00 p.m. The location is at the council conference room slash video, via video conference. We have one item on the agenda, which is emerging issues in utilities, and that's it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Perez.
No unfinished business. Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on behalf of Public Safety Chair Rivera, I'm announcing the Public Safety Committee meeting on Monday, July 21, at 5:00 p.m. in the council conference room. And by video conference, the Public Safety Committee will be meeting. We have five items on the agenda. Animal control update, Fourth of July debrief, Fifth Sixth Streets and Park Avenue update, RRFA briefing, and emerging issues in public safety. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Committee will be meeting on Monday, July 21, at 6:00 p.m. in the council conference room and via video conference. There are two items on the agenda. First is a 120-day closure of Hauser Way North First is 120-day closure of Hauser Way North between Lake Washington Boulevard North and Lowe's Business Delivery Access, and second, emerging issues in transportation. That's all.
All right, thank you. Councilmember O'Halloran.
I have no new business, Mr. Mayor.
All right. What's the wish of the council?
Move adjourn.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Council President Albertson, that we adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Stay, say nay, we are adjourned. Thank you.